Okay, discussion, all favor. Okay, can I have a motion for eighty minutes for marshmallow?
I'll make one for eighty minutes for marshmallow.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, on favor? Okay, motion for the April ten, eighty minutes?
I'll make a motion for April ten.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion, on favor? Okay, motion for the twenty-fourth, twenty-three minutes? Second? Further discussion, on favor? Next on the agenda. Okay, this, this court asks us if we got any concerns with a liquor license, consequently, one eighty-one West State Street beer and wine license, not liquor license, a beer and wine license. That's something special, that's out of our per
So, if I may, the only thing that I've seen based on the legal notice is that I was, I did receive the original site plan approval from the, from the planning board that has different numbers than what is on this legal notice. So, they're now adding, you know, some additional seats outside in addition to additional seats inside the cafe. So, you know, my recommendation would that, would there be at least be a site plan, an amendment to the original permit, because it's new seating that they're listing on this legal notice, even though it is for a...
That's a different, I would treat that as a totally different issue.
So...
They're asking if we have any concerns with the liquor license.
Okay, so then should the, should the case be, if, if the select board says what does the planning board say, then should the response be that the planning board recommends a site plan amendment?
What are you, what are you looking at there?
So, I look at the legal notice, and then there was... So, there was, for this address, one eighty-one West State Street, which is the address of this particular permit, the original site plan reviewed back in two thousand and five issued an approval with conditions based on this conversion of the existing farmhouse into four, a four-bedroom dwelling and provide limited food catering on-site premises best received for fifteen to twenty guests and preparation of food catering on-premises, uh, permits. So, it is based on looking at the original approval from the planning board in two thousand and five and knowing that they have since amended, you know, even though they are taking that particular permit to the select board for the liquor license, they would, they included some additional seating on their public notice. So, it's about the parking spaces presumably for the tickets to join a guest. Yeah, so then the only concern I would have is parking. Based on what typically happens when you add new seats or additional seating is that there may be more people coming to the business. They list the amount of parking spaces to be reserved. So, the vote was four, zero, one, to approve the site plan for the best of the time in July. And I believe here, there's some matter of fact, two thousand and five. And that was the business of that, uh, original case space. So, I received this from Kathy, and that was on the public notices provided.
Okay, the occupancy number is thirty-five forty. Seeing the comparison, that's...
So, this is the, this is the only thing on that sheet. Yeah, this, this was presumably for the liquor license and what was presented to the select board for that. And then there's also...
So, where did that occupancy number come from?
Which one?
That one right there. That's on the new application, right?
That is on the application to the select board for the liquor license.
So, they can't determine what their occupancy is and not get that tested?
Yeah, and I mean, I understand the difference between the, I think that the planning board should assess and go through a process where it reviews the site plan and address that. I don't know what the, um, select board's conversation was yesterday regarding this particular address and the issues on the liquor license. But, this is, was presented presumably in the town's application for liquor license. And then there's also, so there's obviously drawing attention to the interior, and then here, this is on the patio. They, I guess, in that patio, which, again, it's okay to have an outdoor seating area, but letting the parking is not completely a case concern.
That's why I said, well, if you're worried.
Yes, I don't completely understand this whole, like, for just an approved liquor license. The board, this is for, so, when other boards are acting on other permits and they have the jurisdiction over, other, there's other opportunities for other town boards to comment. And the way that the public hearing notice was presented for the select board to act on the liquor license for one eighty-one West State Street was to have a liquor license, but because in that public notice it included an increased amount of seats that are different from the original approval of that this planning board made in two thousand and five. So, it's just drawing attention to that, um, and knowing that typically if there is an increased amount of seats, there would be some sort of amendment to approval. Because you would want to have the conversation with the owner or the business owner who's operating that business to see if they had any, um, particular, you know, opportunities for negotiation because there's going to be an additional parking based on the office.
So, let's just send a letter stating that, um, the occupancy is different than the original. I'm sure the fire, I'm sure the fire chief's got a fight back to him. And they don't give the occupancy of the food. On, on, on the interior, which, which has ironically certain, which has parking.
So, if they kept their original same seating, they had parking as the original approval of the legal notice there? Yeah, um, that, so, when in two thousand and five with the fifteen to twenty guests on premises, if they kept that presumably, if it was just asking for the liquor license, there would be nothing for the planning board to act on or recommend. But because we know based on what they provided to the select board, they're now asking for increased amounts of seats.
Just on patio?
On patio and inside. So, it'd also be good to know because initially when the planning board issued its approval in two thousand and five, it was also, are they still planning to do the, is there still dwellings, like, are there, you know, still apartments that are being used for that purpose? I think it probably would be helpful to understand. If they were removing that, then presumably parking could be in. But if there's still residential use and they're adding all of these additional seats to the restaurant, then I think they're looking to address parking. So, Chair, I can draft a letter that basically is stating that the occupancy is different than the original permit that was issued in two thousand and five. Please outline for a second.
Select board, jurisdiction now?
Yeah, for this particular license. Yeah, I mean, I think at the end of the day, even though that the, if the liquor license is issued, they probably would still have some issues dealing with maybe. And if they're making any improvements to the interior, they'd open the parking up.
Well, if the, the original had an architect's signature, it's still up.
Yeah, and it's based on what they had want. Now, this application is, you know, having this additional seating.
So, there's been some changes over to maybe they have additional parking. Okay, next on the agenda, actually, we'll come back to the implications.
Okay.
Let's, let's jump into, uh, the site, site plan, which is two minutes.
So, it was the, the, uh, the board remembers when you had the job, you know, this year. It was the site kind of for the large garage. There were no additional conditions, it was just a quick approval. And what I can do, um, Chair, is just send you, because you can sign the back of the board. So, let's do that.
Okay, I'm gonna jump to five forty-five.
Hi, Paul Bowyer, one forty-two Carver Street. The reason I ask immediately today is I've been doing some sleuthing regarding all of the valve things going on in North Carolina, Carver Streets, Carver Street, Chicken Street. And while I was doing that, and some tiny little sets were off, I noticed the lots that were created last year, uh, JL and Crawford is the parent lot, are all shown as forty thousand square feet. Requirement within the water supply protection is to, is a sixty thousand square foot lot. So, as it stands right now, and we can show you the map. There are nine lots there, including one in East Minne, eight. That's the one, it's a house, it's a nice house with people, five hundred and five acres. These are all, I mean, eight, four acres, which is a tad over forty thousand square feet. And there's supposed to be sixty thousand square feet. This is, this is the largest part of the Hurley district, which runs, um, up, it almost a bagged down road, so it kind of super close to that, but for that to down to one foot. This is, so, and I bring it to your attention, because there are eight for sale, so it's almost washed right now, but not sold, so it's time to correct the problem.
We don't determine whether the lots are built.
Well, I will say, I, I talked to the border health, the town administrator, the building inspector, you know, the county's, the building, the border health agreed with me that it should be sixty thousand square feet.
They, did they agree?
The building inspector agreed with me as well, he's new.
When they come to us for an AR, doesn't necessarily mean it's a total lot. They can, they can place up their property any way they choose.
Do you understand that?
Without that, so...
But it's showing official through the document, which is the...
They, they all, it doesn't mean it's a total lot. They, that could be wetlands, we, we have no determination on whether or not it's total. They can come to us and ask to slice up any way they choose. We're obligated to approve it.
That's true.
Because it's an AR, approval not required under subdivision by... So, so if, if that, if what you're saying is true, which I believe is, you take it to the border health, take it to the building inspector, and they won't issue a permit based on...
Yeah, the building inspector told me that he couldn't issue permits for these small lots. So, these lots are all my, my...
Not a really good point, so that's something that...
So, I just want to make sure that all the applicable laws and terms are where it is.
It could be grandfathered in also, as building...
It can't be grandfathered in unless they're carved out quite through the passage of the water, which has passed away. I mean, this man, this eight, nine, eight, which was smoke accident, it's very violent, that decades. And the reason it's passed is what's applied to it, because the town set aside the land on Chicken Street. It's upside down for, um, future common supplies of ours. And the other thing I noticed was that Shay Hossen started to develop his piece down here by the, by the pond. And the pieces already developed at the former Carter, uh, in Chicken Street. Those lots, at that point, were all shown as one, one acre acres. And they moved them out, and that is sixty thousand one hundred and twenty feet. So, he moved the limits. Soon, the kit to move is putting a new one into the pond, and it's ruined. They put in the cul-de-sac as well. Those are all the water supply protections of the town.
They're being to buy against the, uh, the chat.
That's the problem, I think.
Yeah, 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 once I've got four fronters lots, and the kit is putting cul-de-sac in back. I think we have a million foot, nine, ten, one cul-de-sac last night. Cause there's a second, there's a...
Seven, those five dollars, I think, they've been, um, dating back to a long time. A lot of different ones, seventy-five, because of maximum.
Well, I probably shouldn't, but, um, in the case of my, this is a discussion, so, it sounds like you're agreeing with me that these don't need to be in the law school.
If the fact what you're saying is true, it's a, it's a, uh, water check, actually. And sixty thousand square feet, that would be, that would be, that's not our jurisdiction. So, we don't, uh, that's a, that's not, that's not...
So, that would be border health.
No, I, um, I, I...
Okay, next on the agenda, another packet.
I've got an extra up there. Um, so, in the packet, what I'm looking for is the approval for a special permit to do events on my property. In your packet, you have a special, um, permit request for the SBA, um, permit. There is also all the requirements under the new backlog for the special permit and all of the questions therein. Uh, I also have in here a sketch of where, not, not a sketch, pictures, of this is approximately where the tents will be. Um, and I would be certain to have those hundred feet many water, uh, requirement. I don't know if I'm gonna take it for minutes just to look through. I also have the butters list is also included in this packet. And, um, here's for some, which is also required. So, the property itself does have a separate entrance, so it is, it's a separate fire room that we maintain. Um, that would be our main entrance. We do have a location board, additional parkmanship, we get, I don't think we might need it. But we have other areas that we could park vehicles. We're not looking for anything more than a hundred and fifty people at any time, and that would be the max. We're not looking to do every event with a hundred and fifty people. So, we're just looking to do it seasonally, and the tents, everything that comes in, goes back out, that includes facilities, catering, and technicality.
Good old, my, my...
Yeah. I'm done. I find my own property now, so...
Will you run the get higher?
No, I wrote there, I, uh, my sister's house.
Looks like everything's true.
Yeah, so, Heather, I think the only thing that I need to do is officially schedule a public hearing because it requires a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what happens, and what trench fires before that is, this, this application pack will be shared with other town departments. The, the planning board has issued a special events permit venue, special events venue permit in the past, and there was considerable back and forth, especially with the fire department and the police chief. So, you know, I think the expectation is that there will probably be conversations that happen.
That's not...
That, you know, uh, when we get this, when we get this to them, they may have further questions. They may have some requests. Um, previously, after the planning board did approve that special events venue, there were also some, uh, conditions attached to the approval. So, I think, you know, just understanding that this needs to go through a public hearing process and explain to you that it's likely that there will be some, um, feedback that you'll get from mostly the fire department and the police chief.
So, next step, so I just want to give back when that public hearing is.
Yeah, and if you, just, I think there's a fee attached, um, yeah, if you didn't pay that to Kathy?
I, I can give that to you tonight, if you, I don't, there was no, where they told me what the fee was? It was fifty dollars plus, um, postage is what I understood. But I don't know if you have a fee as well. I, I already have a fee on our list, so that's done, ends at that.
So, the other, the other twenty that they need to process is for the bail.
Okay, so should I go to have an honor for that one?
Yeah, I want to do that, I'll let Kathy to get, uh, public hearings.
Okay.
And, uh, I think there's gonna, there's gonna have to be some sort of fee.
Um, presumably, it would be the fee, whatever, I don't know what the, there is a special permit fee, but I'm not, I'm not talking about it. That could be, uh, the, the output that did the, uh, that the other special events, I mean, permit did pay a fee.
I also don't have...
You're not, you're not being consistent on that.
Yeah, I don't have a permanent structure either, so, um, if, there would be not much to look at unless there's actually an event happening. Or... It looked like it was based on structures, but I, I could be wrong.
Well, so, um, you'll ask about your tent, if it has size, size, maybe it's, if it has three sides, I think it's an exit sign.
Heather, what I can also do is I can share with you the approval that was given to the other special permit.
Okay, great.
Um, that way, if there are considerations that you want to make prior to having the public hearing, you can do so.
Okay.
Um, if there are any changes that you would make to this prior to the public hearing, make sure that it gets to the planning board, but, yeah, I mean, it could be helpful to see what the fire department and the police department's considerations were.
For that one, is that possible for you to mail that information up?
I will see, um, Kathy has it, but I will get it.
Okay, very good.
There was a fire. I'm still there, which is, and there's still a fire department. The, uh, that's why I'm a couple of fire, but I've been maintaining it.
I've been maintaining it for the last fifteen years because there's a bunch of towns named it. And I prefer that the fire department and the county, so I'd like to see the truck get down there for the students.
So we have a, we've recently grabbed that too, so it's, it's more than possible.
Captain, post a hearing. When do, when do you plan on having that?
Do you have anything scheduled as of yet? Because I was making sure that all of this was.
I just want to see what we can do, uh, spin it around as far as.
I, like I said, I don't even have a, I haven't even started the website yet because I don't want to do anything until I know that I'm on the board, so.
So typically, the planning board meets the second and the fourth Monday of the month.
Correct.
So it's likely that the earliest we can get, once we, you know, get the, um, uh, the fees to, uh, to Cathy, um, just get, although that's a similar way, is the twenty-fourth of July for a possible special, uh, public hearing for that. Because we do have to post, we would have to post, um, that meeting for the two weeks before that. The Monday, the tenth, and the Monday, the seventeenth.
She'll have that checked tomorrow.
Do you want five copies of this to go to Cathy so she can serve her land to the department?
So it was five copies that was required, and there are five copies here. Um, I don't know if, yeah. So she needs to have five copies, I suppose.
Yeah, because we're going to serve it.
Okay. Okay. Sh, uh, I'm just, that's something I wrote too. That was also required.
And we'll have to.
Yeah, if you know what's the, of this, um, I would do it in time of the document. That would just be helpful, like quickly share.
Oh, okay. I might be a few of that.
Yeah, my time is having our cabinet.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
I was, I was at the meeting last night and I put in a concern with, um, Mrs. Leonard, and she said that you were going to have something today about the golf center. There was something supposed to be on the docket today about the golf center on, on the street, so. I was here the last time we had the, uh, the golf center discussion with, with Isaac and his lawyer and all that. I, I live at one seventy-four West State Street, right next to it. Um, and, you know, there's, he's not closing at eight o'clock. You know, he's there banging around with lights on, blaring the lights until ten o'clock. Um, I, I don't know who to go to. That's why I always figured I'd come and just ask you guys who, you know, who I would go to for that.
So as I said earlier, we, we're not, we're not code enforcement. So that would be a code enforcement officer.
Okay.
He would have to, you know, look at the, the, uh, the conditions that were placed on the, on the business.
Okay.
See if they're in violation and keep that to the presser.
All right, and code officer was, is whom?
It's the building inspector.
Building inspector, okay, yeah, she gave you that information too. Um, she also told me that you are here, so I just figured, yeah. Cause, uh, you know, where you put in the rules of this, this, and this, that's not happening.
That's, that's up for me to.
Okay, all right, so I could just contact him and then you'll, perfect. That's all I needed. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, we've got, one of us can hang it up. Services. Everybody's looked at, motion to.
We have an invoice for services of the planning and planning commission to the town grantee for a total of two thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and nineteen cents. From the packet, thirty dollars worth.
So it's just, just meeting time, minutes.
Meeting time, minutes, um, agendas are, and special projects.
We have a second. Further discussion. Out of favor, I.
Get paid.
Um, then, there's just a memo here, a campaign disclosure report due. January twenty-fourth.
I have enough, so I can, I can work with Cathy. It might be something related to your elections. I don't know. Uh, I don't necessarily have that.
Oh, yeah, that's okay for us. I haven't spent that much of it, it was not anymore.
So.
Maybe it's like, who, who's that for reelection?
No, it's regarding, I don't know. This sounds like campaign finance, so it's like whatever you're out, maybe, I don't know.
So in other words, I, I have to fill out the paperwork?
Yeah, sure.
Presumably, I, yeah, I'll get some documentation from Cathy. Um, if, before the board adjourns, um, at the board, at the, at the last board meeting, I did state that, uh, on behalf of the planning board, I was going to submit, um, a grant application for the community one stop. I was wondering if you were receiving anything, because they did put your email address. And if you can share with me what that response was. I don't know if she's in the, in the campaign, then I would follow up with that. Uh, yeah, I hope you're.
Could, could be on to it.
I mean, if you could take a look, if you don't, if you don't have it, then I will. It would be the executive office housing the local communities. So it should say, mass.gov is the responsible, we have, um.
Then can, regarding what, um, the email that Cathy sent out earlier?
Mm-hmm.
So what do we do? We have only a little bit of time to respond to that. I looked in the registry and I did not find anything that was attached.
Are we accusing myself of that subject?
Okay.
And I don't think any, anyone else was on the board during that period of time. Nita, were you?
I was next as nineteen.
Oh, nineteen eight, yeah. That's it like that.
I mean, I don't know, I've never seen the records of the planning board. Presumably, if there is a place where records of subdivisions exist.
Yeah.
Um, it may, there might be a file there. Um, you did exactly what I would have done, see if it was recorded. Um, we may need to figure out how to make sense of that. I've never seen.
I mean, I think the only other next step would be to call, like, to actually call the registry of deeds to see if they have something, just to make sure. If we can't find any information on it.
They should, they should, because it is a subdivision plan. And I don't know if covenants are typically, um, you know, filed at, at, or if that just belongs to the town. But there should be a plan for that subdivision. And an approval document from the planning board to approve that subdivision. Um, but with regards to the covenant, that is very specific to the approval. And it may be in some background material with, but paper for matching.
So we have a town, we have a town attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is, I think this is just a matter of asking Cathy. Cathy, where are your armed copies? Let me add it.
Probably downstairs.
Is that where the planning board's archives are?
I don't know. Yeah, I just know the people have stuff down there. This used to be the library, you don't have to bring it for me.
Yes, so I think what, I'll respond to that email that you sent.
Yeah.
And if I, I might see if she can put me in place. I have to learn math because I'm sure I wouldn't be able to. Yeah, I'll follow up with Cathy because I know it's ten days.
And maybe we're approaching that date.
Yes. I believe we can get a schedule too. Yeah, and more than likely, if that's the case, yeah, we'll figure out if there's any exception. This would be very important. But it, it likely just going to be filed for that subdivision.
Yep. Do we ever talk about those outdoor facilities? Maybe at this stage. Are this ready? It was one of the, it's.
I think that we, it just kind of.
It was a nice, like, community and stuff, okay?
Yeah, there.
Right.
No, we, there was no resolution on that.
So you had to, you know.
So I received a letter, an email from David Cogan, the building inspector of the postal.
Mm-hmm.
He's trying to play catch up for a lot of things that were left behind. First one, thirty-four West State Street, Orange National Credit Union, the sign is up. They apply on one eleven twenty-three. Until, really, a nicer for trigger planning board.
That happened.
That did happen.
That happened.
The storage facility came before the planning board.
Second one, there was one oh four West State Street, Plenary Valley, Chapter Eight, replacement sign internally eliminated as well.
That one came. That one came, but never formally, like, it was a conversation.
Right.
Because that was supposed to be one that the police chief and the fire chief thought they could use it for information.
Yeah, but there was some, yeah, considerations, but that was never formally.
And then the one thirty-eight West State Street, local storage group replacement. They did go, when, when I heard that I had a copy of the results.
Oh, okay. I'll look. One thirty-eight West State Street.
And we did approve that one?
I do. Oh, I don't know if that was a formal application or they just came in and the planning board, um, it was determined that it was just a replacement, they were kind. So typically, we really have submitted that, so we can share with them, I mean, draft at the minute. One thirty-eight, take.
Yeah. I think it was the same stock.
I believe West State Street.
They got really, really.
Really west.
Well, here is state. And they were illuminating it the same exact way, they weren't backlighting it, they were uplit it, so.
Okay. You have anything else? And I'll, I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at six seventeen P M.
Second, I'll second. Out of favor, I.